Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, September 28th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. The flag is behind me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get started with our special presentation tonight, I'll just make a couple comments. First, we have two opportunities for public comment. The first opportunity would be public comment that are limited to agenda items only, and there's a sign-up sheet in the back. And at the end of the meeting, there is a public comment which is not limited to agenda items. In both cases, we'll just ask you to verify that you're a township resident before you speak. So, once in a while, I do double duty, and as many of you know, in addition to my board position, I'm the fire chief in Northampton, and tonight we have a special presentation and something that's just really incredible, a special honor to honor a crew from Northampton Fire Department that made an incredible rescue in Newtown Township. So if I may, I'd like to call the Newtown Fire Chief up, Chief Glenn Forsyth, and I'll come down to the floor and he'll make the presentation. Thank you.
At least you made it much easier for me to try and figure out how to address you, so I can call you chief. My name is Glenn Forsyth. I'm the fire chief in Newtown. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'd just like to give you a little synopsis on the operation that we had on the Fourth of July in Newtown Township. We were dispatched for a dwelling fire at 17 Nathan Court. As soon as I went on radio, the county dispatch center advised me that we had a dwelling with heavy fire with entrapment. I heard his voice come on the radio. It was Rescue Three Lieutenant Stoner. He said, "Chief, we're at Middle Holland and Buck. Would you like us to start in?" With the call with entrapment, we had them start in. Their crew immediately went into service. They had a three-minute response time. Our career staff was also working, but we were coming from the township building, so their response time cut our time in half. They were able to make the save. We took the victim off the roof. The crew did an incredible job, and we're here tonight to present a unit citation to This unit citation is presented to the crew of Rescue Three from Northampton Township Fire Department. Lieutenant Cody Stoner, Senior firefighter Joe Chisacki. I worked on that all day, too. Someone very near and dear to us, Mac Earhart, Chris Henwood, and Kyle Weiss. The plaque reads, "On Monday, July 4th, 2022, Rescue Three responded on Tactical Box 45-2 for a dwelling fire with entrapment. Rescue Three was the first fire apparatus on scene. They encountered heavy fire showing on Side A and a homeowner trapped on the roof of the dwelling. Their quick response along with the actions provided a successful end result." And it's our pleasure to present this to you, and thank you for an outstanding job. Lieutenant? I would just like to say, there are so many times that we work together. The relationship that Newtown and Northampton has is absolutely incredible. Chief Seliger and I have been working together for probably longer than we'd like to admit at this point, so...
Forty years.
Forty, forty-plus, okay. So it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. It's a pleasure to see the guys from Northampton. Our crew, we have a good crew on the ladder tonight. They come over to recognize these gentlemen. I can't thank you guys enough. It's nice to know that Rescue Three is always there for us, and I hope you guys feel the same way that our crew is always there for you. So on behalf of the Newtown Fire Association and Newtown Emergency Services, thank you very much, and we look forward to the continued relationship.
I'm just going to say a few words. First of all, I'd like to echo Chief Forsyth's comments. The relationship between Northampton Fire Department and Newtown Fire Association, I think, goes back probably a century or more. Sometimes we think of them as our sister fire department because we do so many mutually calls together. I just want to just take a second and just kind of explain the gravity of what happened here. We train, we train, and we train, and we never know when we're going to put that training to use. And part of our training is helping us to make, not just firefighters, but police officers and EMS responders, split-second decisions. And split-second decisions matter, and the split-second decision that Lieutenant Cody Stoner made and the crew mattered. They said, "We're close. We weren't dispatched on that, but we should go." And they went and they took a guy off the roof, who, by the way, was getting burned. I mean, don't take this lightly. He wasn't just standing on the roof and needed a ladder. He was in trouble. He was in big trouble. So that training, that split-second decision, really mattered that day, and that's what we all do, and the people of the township should know that's what we're dedicated to do. It's in our blood, us and Newtown and everybody, and we will always be there, just like Rescue Three's crew was that day. So, thank you, guys. Fantastic job. We're really proud of what you did, and thank you to the Newtown Fire Association for coming and recognizing them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, if I could say one other word, too?
Yeah, if any supervisor.
Yeah, I'm sure some of the other board members want to say something, too. I just, as a longtime resident of the township, I just really appreciate all the efforts of the firemen, both Newtown and Northampton and elder towns. It's so happy that you guys work so well together. I mean, it's just so important to everything. Last night, I came back from Philadelphia, and there was a huge fire in Philadelphia. And I don't know how you guys do it. I mean, I saw all this black smoke, I could see the fire, and, you know, it's just incredible. So I really want to thank you. I know all the board members want to do the same thing. We really do appreciate your efforts. And also, I really like the fact that Adam is on the board of supervisors and the fire chief. And actually, you're wrong, Adam. You don't have two roles, you have three roles, or four roles. First, you're a husband, right? Then you work at some company, I know, and then you do fire chief and then also the board of supervisors. It's really helped out a lot. And, you know, Adam's one that spearheaded the building of the new firehouse in town here, so it's very good. So, once again, I just really, really appreciate the efforts. And last night, I mean, God, this fire was unbelievable. I saw it was black smoke and everything, scary. And I don't know how you guys do it, but I give you credit for doing it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys are heroes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for everything you do. We are so grateful and so proud.
Yes, I would say, obviously reiterating thank you as well, but I would say to anyone out there, think about what you were doing on Fourth of July, and then think about what these men and women were doing on their Fourth of July. So thank you for what you do. Thanks, everybody. Thanks again, everybody.
Really great turnout.
Yeah.
Very impressive, how united the organization is. Both organizations, both groups. Is that the new recruit right next to Matt there?
Yeah. Nice to see all the families, too.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Jake.
Okay.
All right, I assume there's no public comment because none have signed up. We'll move on to the consent items. Approval of the minutes. Paula?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, I request that the minutes of July be accepted, be approved with unanimous consent.
August.
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 August 8th.
Thank you. Paula, accounts payable. Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for September 14th, 2022. Total all funds, $1,941,793.78. And I also have the bills list for September 28th, 2022. Total all funds, $1,490,739.50.
Thank you, Kim. And one last item under consent, a planning module resolution. Barry?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. So this is more of a housekeeping item. This is a two-family subdivision on New Road, right across from the school in Churchville Elementary. And basically, they need to have a planning module, would need to be approved by the board, so it's more of a housekeeping thing. It was approved many years ago.
Thanks, Barry. So is there a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent items are approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, I need to open a public hearing to consider a proposed ordinance amending stormwater management regulations as required by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Call the meeting open, and Bob, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Department of Environmental Protection is requiring that municipalities adopt an updated stormwater management ordinance by the end of this month. A copy of the ordinance is on our website. If I may make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I move to approve ordinance number 614, amending the Northampton Township code related to stormwater management requirements.
I'll second it. There's a motion and a second. Before we have board discussion, is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment? No public comment, thank you. Is there any discussion from the board? Start with Bob.
None. This is fairly straightforward.
Thanks, Barry.
No, no comment.
Kim?
Nope, I'm good.
Paula? No comment from me. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, consider a resolution... Oh, closed the public hearing. Thank you. Consider a resolution opposing the sale of the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. Bob?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, as everyone knows, earlier this year, the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority Board announced it had entered into exclusive negotiations with Aqua Pennsylvania Incorporated to sell its sewer system assets to that private utility company. I believe there's been a massive outcry, both in our township and across the county, so I'm very happy to say... May I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution R 22-19, opposing the sale of the Bucks County Sewer System to Aqua Pennsylvania Incorporated, and urging the Bucks County Commissioners to take whatever action is necessary to terminate all negotiations between the authority and Aqua.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a couple seconds.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Anything else? Bob?
I noticed everyone wanted to second that one. I will say, especially being in Doylestown every day as I am and seeing not just the backlash in the township, but actually the backlash across the county, that word has gotten out about this. I have not encountered a single person who is in favor of it. I personally am against it. I'm glad to see that democracy working, I guess. We've made enough of a stink that it's really had a result. So hopefully, that carries forward into next year. I don't know that this is entirely dead, but for now, it seems like we're on the right path.
Thanks. We'll go to the seconds. Paula?
I agree. I am very happy, and it's not only Bucks County, but I think surrounding Delaware County, a lot of areas are against it, so it's a good thing.
Kim?
I would like to thank all the residents who wrote letters and made their opinions heard. I heard about this all over the place, even in Giant Supermarket. I had people coming up to me, and I just want to say that we were all against this, but I just want to thank the residents for getting involved and letting their voices be heard.
Thanks, Kim. Barry?
No, I agree with everything that's been said, so I'm very glad it's been turned down, so yeah, I support it.
And just my comment is, you know, people might say, "Well, you know, it's already been turned down. Why are you doing this?" Well, we wanted to make it clear what Northampton's position was and is, regardless of whether it's a done deal or it comes back in the future. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is, consider a resolution requesting the U.S. Post Office to allow individual mailboxes for new single-family homes. Paula?
Okay. The township recently received complaints from residents in several new developments concerning mail delivery. The United States Postal Service regulations now require all residential developments to have gang mailboxes, instead of allowing individual property owners to install mailboxes at the street line in front of their properties. Congressman Fitzpatrick was made aware of this issue and suggested the township adopt a resolution requesting his office intercede with the postal service to determine if it will change its policy to allow new single-family homes to install individual mailboxes in front of each home, and to reduce its policy from an 80% occupancy rate to a 50% occupancy rate before beginning mail service in any new development. Can I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution R 2220, requesting the United States Postal Service allow individual mailboxes for new single-family homes, instead of a gang mailbox system, and requesting that the postal service begin mail delivery in all new developments when 50% of the development is occupied.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, discussion, anything else? Paula?
No, that's it.
Barry?
No, I think it's a very important resolution. I think it's... I didn't realize until recently, but you have large developments of one-acre homes and spread over a large area, and everybody has to go to the one place just to pick up the mail. The other thing I mentioned to Adam about it, and he also mentioned from a public safety standpoint, now having individual mailbox makes it harder to find people's homes because they're not individually identified, so I fully support it.
Thanks, Bob.
Similar to Mr. Moore, I wasn't aware of this until recently, but it seems kind of common sense to me, and so I'm in favor of it.
Kim?
I totally agree with everything that was said.
Same here. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have a report out on our municipal obligation for police and non-uniformed employee pensions. Kim?
Yes. The administration is required by law to submit a report to the Board of Supervisors on the Minimum Municipal Obligation, MMO, for each of the employee pensions plans by September 30th each year for the following fiscal year. The MMO represents the funding level required by the township to maintain the actuarial soundness of each plan. The township actuary calculated the required contribution amounts for the 2023 plan year, and these amounts must be budgeted as expenditures in the 2023 budget. The MMOs for each plan in 2023 are as follows. The Police Pension Plan, $1,013,383. Non-Uniform Employees Plan, $823,961. Money Purchased Pension Plan, $170,308. And this comes to a total of $2,7,652. The total MMO for 2023 is a decrease of $88,354 from the previous year. The township expects to receive approximately $834,000 in municipal pension system state aid that will reduce the required local contribution. The balance of $1,173,652 will be budgeted in the general fund. A vote to approve the MMOs is not required, but this information must be included in the minutes, the meeting minutes for auditing purposes.
Thank you. There's no action that needs to be taken. It was more of a report out. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to our liaison reports, and Kim, you still have the floor.
Oh, great. First, the Senior Center. It's wonderful to look back to 300 years ago, this past Saturday, at the Senior Center. Thanks to all who participated in the special events being held to mark the township's 300th anniversary. There was something fun and interesting for everyone. There were colonial crafts, which I made one, and it smells wonderful. A fashion show with clothing dating back to the 1700s, including garments from Pensbury Manor Exhibits, and a chance to get old-time pictures taken. Lively and entertaining music performances, which Chairman Seliger and I got our picture taken with the band. And we had, and we also had refreshments that were from the colonial era. It was an awesome day. The fall season comes with a bunch of new activities and great events planned for the coming months. The best way to get all the details about the activities and programs is to go to the center's website at northhamptonsc.com, or stop by the center. Some dates to remember, Boscov's Friends Helping Friends time again. Anyone can purchase a ticket in advance at the Senior Center for only $5 and receive a 25% off all-day shopping pass to shop at any Boscov's on Wednesday, October 19th. It's shopping fun for everyone. You just need to stop by the center and purchase your shopping pass. The center's members will be celebrating the fall season with their first Oktoberfest to be held on Friday, October 21st, from 11:30 until 2:00. The ticket price of just $18 will include festive food, entertainment, games, and prizes. Seating is limited, and you must be a center member to participate in this event. The center's annual holiday marketplace is scheduled for Friday evening, December 2nd, from 5:00 to 9:00. If you or anyone you know is interested in being a vendor there, there are still a few spaces left for this great holiday event. And now Parks and Rec. Wow, what a fun-filled September. First, I'd like to report that I attended the ribbon-cutting dedication ceremony for the Miracle League Playground that was held two weekends ago, and it was spectacular. The improvements made to this playground are tremendous, and I can see greatly appreciated by all who come to use it. What a great addition to what is already a great park. Second, I know I am cutting into Paula's report, but I have to let everyone know what a great time I had at the 300th Anniversary Fun Fest held last Friday at the Civic Center Basin. Kudos to the Parks and Rec Department for planning this as part of the 300th anniversary, and to the entire township team for implementing such a successful and fun event. And if it wasn't so cold, it would have been perfect, but it was a little cold. Park and Rec has many exciting events and classes for everyone ages 2 and up. In addition to many classes listed in the Fall brochure and online, two new classes have just been added for kids. One is engineering for kids, offering STEM class for kids. Join for Tuesdays in October, or sign up your children for a one-day workshop on Election Day, when kids are off from school, so you can go and vote. The second is Let's Cook PA with Chef Monica for ages, children ages 7 to 12. Monica is a certified chef who will make spooky treats with your children for Halloween. Fall-inspired dishes to celebrate the Thanksgiving season and holiday desserts in December. Speaking of Halloween, October is just around the corner, and I am happy to report that Halloween Happenings will be back at the municipal park this year. The last two years, this event was held outside, and we will do the same this year, as it has been very successful. Halloween Happenings will take place Saturday, October 29th. Registration is free, but please pre-register for planning purposes. The theme this year is the 300th anniversary. Be sure to come out and walk the decorated paths of Broomstick Alley, Pumpkin Way, and cast your votes for the favorite scarecrow, Row and Trunk or Treat displays. Don't forget to dress up and be a part of the costume parade. The supervisors will serve as judges of the parade, selecting costume winners with a new category, 300th Year Costumes. And we will all be dressed up. Can't wait. We will have scarecrow row contests and trunk vehicle display event again this year. Parade contestants will cast their vote for their favorites, promote your business, or get together as a family to help decorate the park with their scarecrows. Registration for the scarecrows and trunk events will be required. There are prizes and trophies for the winners in all the events, along with treat bags for the children who parade while supplies last. I can't wait, and I hope to see you there. To find out about everything else in Park and Rec, visit the website, northhamptonrec.com. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kim. Paula?
Thank you, Kim. Hi. I'm going to talk about the library first. The library board and staff are making progress in trying to understand the future potential of the library to serve the community. They have a steering committee doing that. Your ass, the residents of Northampton, are asked to help by taking a short survey. If you Google Free Library of Northampton Township and go to survey, you'll be able to take our survey and have a little example of it here. You help share, shape, excuse me, help share the future of our Northampton library. We also, at the library, we're looking, we have a fall Tuesday morning matinee for adults at 10 o'clock in the morning every Tuesday. There's West Side Story, American Underdog, different movies throughout the fall. Check out the website, and you can see the listings of all the movies. We are one of the largest libraries in Bucks County, just so we know, you guys know, and the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors and the Veterans Advisory Committee have made the move, to made decision to move the Patriot Flag Program display to the library building as a permanent location. A display is being, is designed, and it will be mounted on the wall space, on the atrium wall, immediately overhead, once you've entered into the library. This will eliminate losing any floor space, which will still allow the display to be front and center to library visitors. There will be a Veterans Day Ceremony held inside the library on Saturday, November 12th at 10:00 a.m. That's the day after. Okay. I just want to quickly mention, the library has a new children's program coordinator/ youth service librarian. Her name is Ms. Keiker, and she is extraordinary, and she's done a lot with the new kids programming. I heard it was excellent. Okay. I won't go talk about 300 yet, but the vets, the Veteran Advisory Commission, is really looking forward to the unveiling ceremony of the Patriot Flags Display, as well as the... well as honoring Veterans Day on Saturday, November 12th at 10:00 a.m. in the Northampton Township Library. Our United States veterans are honored for their patriotism and willingness to sacrifice for all of us. We plan on having Congressman Brian Fitzpatrick and State Rep Wendy Thomas will be in attendance. And as a side note, on November 10th, the United States Marine Corps turns 247 years old. Okay, so that's that. And then, to speaking of the 300th Anniversary, it was a great couple of weekends we had here in the township celebrating the 300th Anniversary. Activities took place at the Rec Center, the Senior Center, the library, police, and the rescue squad. The Churchville Nature Center and the Langhorn Rod and Gun Club scheduled open houses and were thrilled to participate in the township celebration. This past weekend, we had a great turnout for the Friday Fun Fest. We supervisors not only had a great time mingling among the thousands of community members, but thoroughly enjoyed the entertainment, food, and beverages. Thanks to our devoted Parks and Recreation Team for coordinating this, that evening, and the Public Works, police and fire departments, along with the rescue squad, that all were present to make sure the event was a safe and successful one. I want to thank sponsors for the event, Holland Floor Covering, and the founding sponsors, Team Toyota of Langhorn and Gilmore and Associates, for their incredible help with the event. I also like to acknowledge the Northampton Day Festival Committee, who put on yet another successful festival, which was held this past Sunday and finished off this celebratory weekend. I hope everyone was able to stop at the Historical Commission's booth, which featured a display of panels recounting the township's history. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that we have a few more events, including an old-fashioned Bucket Brigade scheduled for October 15th, in conjunction with the Fire Prevention Day and Northampton Trivia Nights scheduled in November. We hope to see you there. I have another announcement for the Veterans Advisory Commission. We are having a fundraiser. It's a hometown, hometown wreath laying fundraiser, and it's at Giuseppe's, and that's the date, it's online, but the date is October 12th. Invite everyone here and everyone listening, October 12th at 6:00 p.m. at Giuseppe's on Second Street Pike. And come one, come all, we need money to raise, we need to raise money for the wreath laying in Union Cemetery for all the veterans there, buried there. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Paula. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of items from the municipal authority. The first of which may surprise everyone in light of the amount of rain we had last week, but actually, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection announced the Commonwealth Drought Task Force has declared a drought watch for 36 counties and asks for voluntary water conservation in those counties, among those counties is Bucks County. You can find out more information on the DEP website if you wish, although the request is generally that persons reduce their individual water consumption by 5 to 10%, which amounts to 3 to 6 gallons per day. Fix your leaky toilets, they're costing you money and they're wasting water. The second issue relates to the Rockville Road water main replacement. The authority's water main on a select portion of Rockville Road terminating at the intersection of Buck Road has been the subject of numerous water main breaks during the past year. Investigations confirmed there was an unusual corrosion issue with buried pipe that was the root cause. Corrective action includes completing replacing the water main for approximately 1,200 feet and providing a corrosion barrier. Once the pipeline has been replaced, the roadway will be subject to a full width resurfacing in the subject area of the disturbance. It's expected that work will commence next week with substantial completion within approximately a month. If there are any questions on that, feel free to contact the authority directly. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Barry?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. I just had two things. One, you know, we're still waiting for a buy right plan for Bucks County Roses for single-family homes and the property, so that's still in the process, going to planning and through zoning. And then the Richville Elementary School, there's a plan to enlarge that with additional classrooms, and that's going with the Planning Commission also, so we'll have more information on that probably in the October meeting. That's all I have. Adam?
Thanks, Barry.
Thanks, Barry. Just real quick for me, a fire prevention open house will be this year on Saturday, October 15th, from 10 to 12 in the municipal park, the same place we did it last year. And we'll have all the fire trucks there and lots of fun activities for both, well, for families, for kids and adults. One thing we're going to do this year in celebration of the 300th Anniversary is, we're going to have an old-time Bucket Brigade contest for the kids with some prizes. So as long as the weather's nice, come on out and visit your fire department. You can see us and try your hand at Bucket Brigade. Just one last comment. All the activities from this weekend were just fantastic. It was actually almost too many to go to if you tried to get around, and all of us, we tried to get to as many as we could. The one that stuck out to me was, there was just a phenomenal presentation at the library about the history of Northampton. Somebody from the Mercy Museum did the presentation. She spent a year putting this together and really digging through a lot of records. And I think we expected to stop by for 10 minutes and try to get to all the other things, and next thing you know, we were still there a half an hour later, because it was pretty, it was pretty neat to just hear some of the things that happened around town, especially a long time ago. So if you get a chance to see that, I don't, I think they're going to have it available in some other media fashion. Take a look at it, it was quite good. Other than that, I don't have anything else. We'll go to manager's report.
Just one item this evening. Our current trash collection contract is expiring at the end of the year, so we will be advertising for bids this next month, and I will, should have a recommendation for you at the next board meeting.
Thanks, Bob. Assistant manager, Bill?
Good evening. The fall newsletter will be in the mailboxes in the next coming weeks, so keep an eye out for the next edition. That's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Bill. Assistant's report, Joe?
No report, other than to say I hope everyone in the community had a Happy New Year over the last couple of days, and to wish everyone an easy fast for the upcoming Yom Kippur holiday.
Thanks, Joe. Engineers' report, Amanda?
No report tonight, other than to echo Mr. Paizo.
Thank you. Public comment, has anyone signed up? Okay, well, with no public comment, no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.